Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled School Committee meeting for Monday, March 17th, 2025. The time is 6:37 PM. Clerk, could you call a roll to determine a quorum?
Student Representative Kelly St. Fort.
Present.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Babcock.
Present.
Ms. Barrows.
Ms. Cornelio.
Present.
Ms. Cristiano.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Present.
Ms. Garen. Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Chairperson Hurley.
Present.
Eight members present.
Eight members present. We do have a quorum. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Please join me in a moment of silence for Stephen Patnod, a beloved fifth grade educator who passed away suddenly. Mr. Patnod was a 19-year EPS veteran, having taught at the English, Whittier, and Lafayette Schools. He is survived by his wife, Allison, and their children, Nathan and Morgan. Our hearts go out to his family and the EPS community during this difficult time. Before we begin, I would like to let everyone know that Ms. Garen and Ms. Barrows expressed their regrets in being unable to attend this evening. Vice Chair Cristiano is attending remotely, so all voting has to be done by roll call. And with that...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
Again, I'd like to extend a very strong congratulations to our superintendent of schools for his recent...
Should I put the TV this way?
Irishman of the Year for the Everett Elks Association. I guess from what I hear, there wasn't a seat to be had in the place. His sister Kim, who doesn't usually fly, flew up. She's from Florida. She really, I think the last time she flew was 12 years ago. She's not a keen, she doesn't particularly like to fly, but I think it shows, you know, how much she cares for her brother. But more importantly, it speaks volumes about the relationships that Bill has, not only with his family, but with this community. And again, it was a jam-packed attendance, and it shows that the hard work that he's done over these last year and a half has really started to blossom. And I can't be prouder to call him my superintendent. So, thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Ms. Cristiano. Congratulations. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral three, reading of the records for, excuse me, Roman numeral three, reading of the records for Monday, March 3rd, 2025.
Motion to waive the read and place on file?
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to waive the reading of Monday, March 3rd, 2025, and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved. Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral four, public comment.
Motion open public comment.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. La Monica, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to open public comment. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero. Public comment is open. The time is 6:41 PM. We have one speaker. You have three minutes to speak. And I would like to invite up Jason Wheeler. Start by stating your name and your affiliation with Everett Public Schools, and that's the start of your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, members of the School Committee. My name is Jason Wheeler, and I'm a proud resident here in Everett. My husband and I are the guardians of a wonderful child who attends the Adams School. He's five years old. From the start of preschool, our family was welcomed with love, support, a sense of inclusion and belonging, ensuring that our kiddo feels seen, safe, and valued in the school. Our family couldn't be more appreciative for the experience that he has had so far. He will be attending the Caveria next year and looking forward to that as well. I'm here tonight to express my support for school-based pride celebrations here in Everett. These celebrations send a powerful message to students, especially LGBTQ students, that they belong. Pride flags, inclusive discussions, and school events don't just create visibility, they foster learning environments while all students feel affirmed and supported. Right now, across the country, LGBTQ students are facing an unprecedented wave of attacks on their rights, their identities, and even their ability to feel safe in schools. From book bans to policies that erase LGBTQ identities from classrooms, young people are being told explicitly and implicitly that they do not belong. But here in Everett, we have the opportunity to continue to send a different message to our students. We can stand up and we can continue to show our students that no matter what happens elsewhere in our schools here in Everett, these schools, our students remain safe, affirmed, and this is a place of belonging for them. Pride celebrations aren't just for LGBTQ students. They benefit the entire school community. They show that young people at their schools, I'm sorry, they show all young people in their schools that there are places of respect, acceptance, and care. No more than ever, or now more than ever, we must center the needs of students who have been historically marginalized and ensure that every child feels safe and valued in their learning environment. I'm proud to live in a community that embraces the values that I urge this School Committee to continue supporting. Pride celebrations in our schools are critical. Pride celebrations are more than a symbolic gesture. They are a commitment to student well-being and a testament to the kind of community that we want to continue to build here in Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Is there anyone else interested in speaking at public comment?
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to close public comment. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero. Motion passed. Public comment has closed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral five, report of the student representative.
St. Fort.
Good afternoon, everyone. Winter Sports Banquet was March 11th, where they celebrated the hard work of those who participated and played all season. The spring season has started today, March 17th, and there will be tryouts all week for spring sports. The Wave Club is partnering with the Elliott Family Resources Tuesday at 5:00 for a women's celebration at the Elliott Center. All women are encouraged to join. The Spanish debate team won second place at the final at the Museum of Science recently. By Literacy Night was a success with over 200 families there in support. Things are in order to our food service company, Whitson's Culinary Group, for their hospitality and varieties of food. CTE had a successful PAC meeting this past Wednesday with many partners and members of the different organizations connecting with each program. EHS Theater Company will host their play on March 26th with free admission for everyone to come watch their retelling of The 146 Point Flame, based on the triangle shirtwaist factory fire of 1911. And they performed at the annual Massachusetts Drama Fest recently, where students won recognition awards for acting, stage management, sound design, and costume design. Senior class hosted a dodgeball tournament on March 12th. That was a great success, with all 9 to 12 grades participating and watching the game unfold. And the student advisory board members are currently working on a civic action project about littering. The goal is to get recycling bins during advisory at school to teach about the harms of littering, which would make the school a better place. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. St. Fort.
Make a motion to accept the report of the student representative.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to accept the report of the student representative and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved. Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral six, report of the superintendent.
I would like to entertain a motion to take Roman numeral six, item number three, out of order.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take Roman numeral six, item number three, out of order. Mr. Superintendent.
Roman numeral six, item number three, is to request approval for the Everett High School STEM Club to travel to Charlotte, North Carolina to compete in the 1080 Racing Challenge 2025 Nationals between April 24th and 25th. I'm requesting favorable action because our STEM students have participated in this competition last year, which was held at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. They will leave Everett on the 24th and return on the 27th. And I know this evening, we're joined not only by the president of the STEM Club, who is our student representative, Kelly St. Fort, but Dr. Anna Sidis and members of the STEM Club who are in the audience this evening. So I'm requesting favorable action. And I know that, I believe that Ms. St. Fort has a quick presentation for us.
Make a motion for favorable action.
Second, and on that, the presentation that she has for us.
Assisted by Jefferson.
Can we make a motion to invite the students up for the STEM Club for the presentation?
Make a motion to invite Jeff and Kelly to speak on the STEM Club for post-budget travel.
Motion made and seconded. Quick roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved, eight zero. Welcome, Kelly and Jeff.
Hello. Hello, everyone. We're here on behalf of the STEM Club in order to ask permission to be participating in the 1080 Nationals competition this year for our STEM Club. I'm here, we're co-captains with Jefferson, Corbeau, and Kelly St. Fort.
Hi. So, the mission and statement for STEM Club is, our STEM Club empowers every high school student by allowing them to explore, innovate, and excel in science, technology, and engineering, and mathematics through our hands-on learning experience in our racing and mechanics teams, our robotics teams, and our business teams. We foster critical thinking, creativity, and teamwork by participating in 1080 races and events. Our students can showcase their skills and hard work while getting real-world experience. We have emphasized hard work and collaboration, and this can be seen by the work the students have put in to strive for excellence in all our upcoming nationals. So, a little bit about our teams. Our racing and our mechanics teams compete in different events such as an oval race, which is kind of like a NASCAR-style race, as well as a course race, which is a set of obstacles that they have to avoid in a timely manner. And there is as well a drag racing, one where they just try to build a car from scratch to make it fastest. And then there's a collaboration race, which includes students from our high schools and other high schools, as well as other countries, as we experienced last year. Our robotics team, which is comprised of mostly sophomores this year, which did really great last year, gaining second place in the overall with over, maybe I'd like to say 10 teams, which competed from across the country and as well across Asia. There were some teams from China. And then there's our pitching and designing team, which is as well as our business team, and that's Kelly's expertise.
So, we have business, our business team is composed of design and pitching. We're supposed to be advertising our club in different ways, and that includes visually with different designs. We make poster boards and we set up tables visually showing how we represent ourselves. There is pitching, where we talk to different people and explain what we do, who we are, and what our mission is, kind of like what we're doing here right now. And those are the two different parts. So, we want to explain why STEM Club is important for the students and for the school within itself. Like Jefferson said before, we foster teamwork and collaboration, which contributes to the community and shows...
It fosters critical thinking and builds resilience, because in our past years, we've experienced lots of hardships through the club, such as in our racing events, we have things break, and we have to think quickly on our feet, and we also have to understand that mistakes happen, things can happen, and we just got to keep rebuilding.
We also foster community and belonging. If you talk to anybody in our club, everybody's a tight-knit community. We all talk to each other, we all love each other. There is cross, not, everybody doesn't have a certain role. Everybody likes to go around, so like you can have somebody that's like in business, but is also interested in mechanics. We encourage people to dip their toes in different places, in different fields, so they can get like experience and know what they like going further. And so, yeah, we emphasize community So, this year, we will be going back to Charlottetown, North Carolina, which will be the Charlotte Motor Speedway. We plan to travel by plane, hopefully, and we plan to use rental cars for modes of transportation.
We also plan to stay in a hotel in Concord, near the Charlotte Speedway. That way, it just makes it easier for getting to and from events on the race days.
These are based off of what we did last year. We have, sorry, hold on. So, we have our last year's expenses and how they've broken down. You can see here, based on the pie chart, that transportation took a lot of part of the budget, and that goes for the plane tickets. We're traveling with a big group of people. Last year, it was about like 14 kids and like two adults. So, getting plane tickets is a little hard for that many people and getting it on the same flight. So, traveling through an agency did really help us through that, to be able to. You can see that we also have different expenses for housing. So, housing includes like the hotel, obviously, and we have different ones like food, and the upper two, where we did have some last-minute like expenses for different parts that were breaking or things that we just needed. So, it's great to be thinking on your feet, obviously, and we're grateful to have the expenses to be able to do that. Thank you. Oh. Go back, go back. Okay. So, this is the proposed budget for 2025.
So, we have, for flights, we have about 745 per person on American Airlines, or that's through a travel agency. On American Airlines by itself, it's about 441 per person. Hotel, we've looked at Crystal Travel, which is about 355 to 455 a night, and then renting cars is about $2,000.
So, food is distributed, distributed, distributed in ways where like, it's about $40 per kid each day, so it's like $10 for breakfast and $20 for dinner and like $10 for lunch. We just put these here, just to explain like how things are allocated and the different ways it's distributed. And we wanted to advocate for a no-agency traveling, just because we wanted to allocate some money different ways, so we can be more on our feet when we're at Charlottetown. But we do understand the need for an agency to just, for safety and like paper trails. We understand that, but we just wanted to put that there just in case. So, thank you for that.
So, about some student safety, we have a contract that we make the students sign, which states that no student will leave their room past midnight unless they have asked the teachers or they have permission from the teachers. We also state that students should keep their phones with them 24/7, just as a way to like stay connected and be able to know where everyone is at. We also have a buddy system, which means you cannot do anything by yourself. You need to have someone there just in case. And whatever the teachers say is law, that's one of them as well.
We understand that it's for our safety and not just, you know, for anything. We understand that what the teachers say is for everybody. And we do, what's the word I'm looking for? We do advocate for safety, and thank you. So, we did put for any questions or answers.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions or comments? Ms. Babcock.
I just want to say thank you for coming up here and sharing this wonderfully detailed plan and well-prepared plan. It's obvious that you've put a lot of thought into this. I was very fortunate last year to take a tour of the high school and to see you working on some of your robots and doing some of the racing and the successful things and the things that weren't, and the continued determination. I think that it's very important for students to have the opportunity to take themselves out of Everett and show the world what we have to offer, and for you to bring a little bit back with you. So, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to show how talented you guys are to the folks in Charlotte, North Carolina. So, thank you for coming up here and sharing this well-prepared and detailed plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Thank you for the presentation. I'm a visual person. I thought that was great. I like that you were involved with the planning and had the breakdown of the costs, and I specifically like your rules that you have. You should listen to your teachers and keep your phones on you at all times. But this is very student-led, and I appreciate that, and I hope a lot of people look up to you and do the same. It involved the students with the planning, and that was very nice.
Thank you.
They made a wonderful presentation almost two weeks ago in my office, and, well, actually, my temporary office here, and they thought about everything, and I'm very proud of them and the whole group that they represent. And I wanted to thank Dr. Sidis and others, who really give our young people a great foundation, not only educationally, but empower them like we talk about in The Tide Rises and what we expect of our graduates. Well, here's a fine example of that right in front of us. So, I'm asking for your favorable action this evening.
Make a motion to excuse our students.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask a question? Forty dollars a day for food? Where do you go eat for forty dollars for three meals a day?
So, that's mostly like on convenience, whatever's around. Last year, we were very grateful to have a plaza right next to the hotel that had many different places, like Chili's. We had Chick-fil-A around. Those are the numbers administered by the state, but...
District.
District, I'm sorry. But we do understand that sometimes it can go over, and sometimes it does balance out.
So, does the club take donations for food if somebody wanted to make a donation to the club, the Sidis? Is that something that we can do to help?
Oh, you can donate anytime.
Very much so.
Student activities account, STEM Club.
Yeah. I'd like to make a donation for food for you, maybe get some different meals when you're down there. So, I will coordinate with the superintendent tomorrow.
I will say these, I'm sorry, can I speak?
Yes, Ms. Sidis.
These kids are really good. I give them the budget. It's 10/20/20, so it's $50 a day, but it depends if they're, like the hotel offers breakfast, then you don't get the 10, so it's 20/20. Just depends on like the situation. But these kids, I give them a budget, and I say, this is how much money you can spend, and they only spend that much money. Sometimes they'll bring extra money so that they can have the extra, especially some of my teenagers here. They need the extra food, so they'll buy some extra food, or sometimes they'll share money with each other and say like, oh, I'm only spending 15, you want my $5. They're really, really conscious of the budget, because they understand that it's a very big privilege to be able to go on this trip. So, they're usually very good with the budget. But if any donations...
Yeah, we don't want them starving. I'm in the fast food business, so I know what breakfast and lunch and dinner costs, and I just, it's admirable that you're only spending that much money. So, maybe we can do something to help, you know, supplement that. Good luck. I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe there was a motion to excuse our guests. Was there...
With the customary thanks.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to excuse our guests. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Thank you very much. Kelly, Jeff, and the rest of the STEM Club team, and Dr. Sidis, thank you very much for the presentation and coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Favorable action. Motion has been made and seconded for favorable action to request approval of Everett High School STEM Club to travel to Charlotte, North Carolina to compete in the 1080 Racing Challenge 2025 Nationals on April 24th through the 25th, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved. Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
We'll return to the regular order of business, item six, item one, Roman numeral six, Superintendent's update. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the audience, I also wanted to thank many of you who attended the Saugus Everett Lodge of Elks Educator of the Year Award, which I received on March 13th. Thank you, former chairperson Cristiano. I know that you weren't able to attend, but I was greeted by Samantha Hurley, Robin Babcock, Margaret Cornelio, Joe Dinoffrio, thank you for being there with me to celebrate this occasion, and so many folks from across the city. It was quite an honor, and I appreciate your attendance and support. I also wanted, I know you were away. I also wanted to thank folks who came to any one of our schools the last couple of weeks during the Read Across America Initiative, and many of the School Committee members here with us this evening, along with city employees, elected officials, and members of the police and fire departments, came to our schools and read during that week, and they were a big hit. So, I wanted to thank them once again for spending part of their morning or afternoon with us at any one of the schools that they signed up for. We will not have another meeting before the next Family University, but on March 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at Lafayette School, all pre-K through eighth grade families are invited to attend an event called Family University. We'll serve a light dinner, followed by two informational sessions. We'll have workshops, representatives from the Cambridge Health Alliance, the Family Resource Center, and helping our parents get familiar with and acquainted with things that will make a difference in not only their lives as members of a family unit, but also for our children. So, again, that'll be March 26th, from 5:00 to 8:00, be held at the Lafayette School. There's some social media and other advertisements out there reminding our families to join us. I think our student representative talked about the Winter Sports Banquet. I also wanted to have a shout-out to both Tammy Turner and the Assistant Director, Steve Gallagher, for putting together a great evening for recognizing our students and our coaches, who were all in attendance, to provide a little overview of their season and to recognize our really top athletes in the Winter Sports Program. Kelly also mentioned the Program Advisory Committee. I think, quite frankly, we haven't had a real cadence with the Program Advisory Committee meetings, as we are required to have through DESI standards, but we did host one on March 12th here at Everett High School. Our Director of CTE, or Career and Technical Education, Siobhan Araya, and Principal Lynch welcomed dozens of industry leaders to Everett High School for this advisory committee meeting, which, as I mentioned, is a mandatory meeting, and it helps our school build and maintain relationship with companies, not only here in Everett, but across Massachusetts, to help advise our CTE program participants and faculty and staff on... advise our CTE program participants and faculty and staff on the various opportunities that exist here in Massachusetts. So I also would like to thank many members of the school committee who were in attendance, Ms. Babcock, Ms. Barros, Ms. Cornelio, and of course, our chairperson was in attendance, Mr. Salazar, who's actually in the audience tonight, and many members of our CTE program staff were available to answer questions and interact with our, our industry folks. So I want to thank each of the members of the various program faculty and staff for making it a very robust evening. Debate team deserves congratulations. Our high schoolers, debaters, Anderson Pineda and Santiago Escoracha participated in a debate, and they were in city finals on March the 7th at the Museum of Science. And this is kind of the latest growing list of honors for our growing debate and Espanol program. Our kids are very excited, of course, not only to participate, but when they bring home an award. So we want to congratulate them. And Madam Chair, that's the extent of my report this evening.
Accept the report, place on file?
Second. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Does anyone have any questions? If I may, from the chair, real quick, on the Family University coming up, that has gone out on Dojo, that has gone out via email. As a parent, I receive those communications. Is registration for that required?
No.
No? Okay. That's all. Thank you. Ms. Babcock?
I just want to say thank you because for the Family University, I saw the video message that was in English and I, I think Spanish and maybe another language.
Yep, three languages.
Very eye-catching. I thought it was wonderful, very thoughtful. It's a great way to attract our families. So I wanted to say thank you for preparing that, and also say congratulations to your Educator of the Year Award. It was a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock.
I believe motion has been made and seconded to accept the superintendent's report and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
So moved, 8-0, motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Item number two is a request approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Everett Public Schools and the Everett Teachers Association, Unit B, which are the administrators. I'm requesting favorable action this evening. As you know, with the passage, with this particular agreement, the EPS will have successfully concluded contract negotiations on all of its bargaining units. That's teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, the administrators, which is Unit B, and our custodial staff.
Favorable action?
Second.
Mr. Barros, did you have a question? No?
No, I, I want to comment about it.
Yes, Mr. Barros.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank the members of this subcommittee, who met, as we know, it's a long process, along with the superintendent, of going over contracts and, and having, you know, back and forth. I, it's great that we see increases three years, this is a three-year contract, correct?
Yes.
Increases in different years for our administrators. They also get, I believe, a new day off on Good Friday as well, and some other benefits. So I am very happy to see that. They all deserve, not only our teachers, students, but all of our educators, administrators. So I just want to thank the subcommittee and, and mention that it's extremely important, all this change that I went over one by one, giving ten increment and, and other types of benefits that they didn't have before. So, thank you.
And we did all this, as you know, without a strike, without any kind of dissension in the community. I think all of you would agree that working with folks and having a real deliberative and civil conversation, a lot of good things can be accomplished, and it shows the respect, the mutual respect between the parties and us. Unit B, which are our administrators, represent about 24, I think that's what we're at now, 24 individuals. So this is a smaller group, as you know. The teachers represent almost 750, but the, this group is, is really quite small. But nonetheless, to your point, Mr. Barros, is they are certainly help keep this engine running, not only at this building, but across the other schools across the district.
Thank you. If I may, real quick, from the chair and part of the bargaining team, it was, it was great to work with the Unit B representatives, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Sisto, Ms. Calakitis. It was another positive experience. Our discussions were collaborative, honest, respectful, and straightforward. There was a few laughs here. I enjoy visuals, and we thanked Mr. Murphy for a lot of his spreadsheets. It's easy to see, kept the conversations really positive, easy to talk about. Happy to announce that they did ratify with overwhelming a jar, with the overwhelming majority. Some of the highlights where they were eligible, they're now eligible to apply for stipend positions like coaching. There was longevity category added on top of some money on existing categories. They have paid parental leave, the same as Unit A. They updated bereavement language to reflect a modern-day household. Two days were added for vacation, and again, there was an increase on their salary. And again, another well-rounded contract and another great experience. Thank you. So I believe a motion was made and seconded for, oh, Ms. Babcock, sorry.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I think that I always remember myself going into the schools over vacation. You need something. You left something behind, you have a question, and our administrators are always there. And, and when we think about ourselves, ours, teachers going on vacation, our administrators are not. They're there, keeping those schools running. So I'm very happy of the additional days that they're getting, to be able to enjoy some personal and vacation and other privileges and other rights. So wonderful job negotiating that, and thank you to all our administrators that keep our schools running year-round.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Ms. Cornelio?
I also am very happy to see that the parents got what they deserved, because for years, they were really below pay. So I feel they're very happy now and well-deserved, and it was a great group to work for. Everybody got along, and they made it happen. Very happy.
Thank you very much. Motion was made by Mayor Di Maria, seconded by Ms. Cristiano for favorable action to request the approval of memorandum in agreement between the Everett Public Schools and Everett Teachers Association, Unit B, the administrators. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
So moved, motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Now we skip to item four, acceptance of a $750 award from Prodigy Education to the Parlin School. As you may remember, at the March 3rd meeting, I mentioned the Parlin students earned this award for exemplary performance during a February event. It's a math challenge, and they receive basically a gift card to purchase pizzas or whatever for their school. So it totaled $750. And I know that the next round, they'd be eligible for the next up on that award. So congratulations to our students, but we do have to accept that gift card, or those two gift cards actually totaling $750.
Make a, make a motion to accept the $750 award from Prodigy Education to the Parlin School.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to accept the $750 award from Prodigy Education to the Parlin School. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
8-0, motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral seven, items submitted by school committee members. Number one, provide authorization and support for the Everett Public Schools to organize a pride-raising celebration at the Everett High School on Monday, June the 2nd, 2025. And Madam Chair, every member of the school committee has co-sponsored this. Mr. Barros, as you know, was the original sponsor, but all the members, Ms. Babcock, Ms. Barros, Ms. Cornelio, Ms. Cristiano, Mayor Di Maria, Mr. Dinoffrio, Ms. Garen, Mr. La Monica, and Chairperson Hurley, all co-sponsors of this item. Of course, Mr. Salazar has been our chairperson for this event, and he's here in the audience this evening. He put a proposal forward that includes a very full afternoon, and I know many of you were able to attend last year's ceremony. So, Mr. Barros, I know that you may want to offer some remarks.
Mr. Barros?
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank, first, my colleagues on the school committee for co-sponsoring this, this item. Of course, thanks to Mr. Salazar, Mr. Lent, Mrs. Pulio for organizing. This would, this would be the fourth year of this event, that it started small and grew, and last year was beautiful outside and, and very successful. Sometimes we take for granted that we are in Massachusetts, that we are, you know, in the Everett Public Schools, but things across the country are happening that are, end up affecting Massachusetts and affecting our schools as well. The dismantle of the Education Department and banning books in schools, which that doesn't happen in the Everett Public Schools, not under our watch, but all of these that affect other districts could end up affecting us. So this event sends a message to all of our students, to all of our parents and, and all of our families, but also to those who work for the Everett Public Schools, that this is a safe place. This is a welcoming place, that we are all important. We, we love who we want to love. We, we have to respect everyone, even those that we disagree with. So I'm looking forward for this celebration this year again. I already heard that's going to be even bigger than last year. So, again, thanks to our educators who organized and, and my colleagues for supporting and be there to send a message that we continue to be a district that welcomes everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barros. Is there a motion for favorable action?
Motion for favorable action.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for favorable action to provide authorization and support for the Everett Public Schools to organize a pride-flag raising celebration at Everett High School on Monday, June 2nd, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral eight, subcommittee reports. Item one, Finance and Negotiation Subcommittee of Monday, March the 3rd.
Make a motion to accept the Finance and Negotiation Subcommittee Report of Monday, March 3rd?
Seconded.
2025.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to accept the Finance Negotiation Subcommittee Report for Monday, March 3rd, 2025, and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
So moved, motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, next order of business?
Roman numeral nine, Bills and Payrolls.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
I'd like to submit bills and payrolls in the amount of $3,361,964.97.
Second. Motion has been made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $3,361,964.97. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
So moved, motion passed.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
I'd like to submit a motion to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $3,361,964.97.
Second. Motion has been made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $3,361,964.97. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral, Roman numeral 10, unfinished business, there is none. Roman numeral 11, new business, there are none. Roman numeral 12, hearings, none. Roman numeral 13, there are no matters for executive session, which leads us to Roman numeral 14, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Barros, seconded by Ms. Babcock for adjournment. Roll call.
Ms. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
8-0, motion passed. We have adjourned at 7:23 PM. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody.